Okay. We've given this, actually, we've given quite a bit of time to this discussion. I don't know if we'll need all that time. We've given an hour to talk about this. By the time we're finished, we've probably got to be, we've run out of things to say. But anyway, what I'd like to do is maybe start it with just a discussion of how things have changed since the last time the planning board looked at the materials. And then, if that could take maybe 20 minutes, 25 minutes, then we can have another, then we can open it up for comments from the board and our consultants, and then to anybody else that might have questions in the road. So, that having been said, let's go ahead and get started. Who is making the presentation?
I'll start off, and then Bob Jeffries from ZBIA Architects. Then I'm going to hand it off to Matt Wanneman from Land Tech Civil Engineers.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
I guess, major changes from the last time we were here has made a much more complete package in front of you. The easements have not been touched at this point first. The easement in Ogilvy's remains the same. Gun Club Lane remains the same. We formerly had a rain garden in this area, and which has now been moved out in order to catch more of the drainage and pretreated. This was a request of the
The Stormwater Authority.
Before it's released into this isolated land.
You've got two, actually. There's another one down there?
Yeah, there's another one down here. This used to be a trench drain, and then we also changed that into a pretreatment sediment for bay before it's transferred into the wetland. We realigned this in order to save some fairly beautiful birch clump here, so we moved this back a little bit. What other major changes there are. One thing is we, this area, we did test for oil contamination. We did find oil contamination.
Where?
Right here. This really convenient oil changing spot. And on the edge of the wetland. So, we had that tested. We then sent the, those samples out for further testing to determine whether it was hazardous waste oil or whether it was relatively clean waste oil. It came out in the second category, which means we have 120 days from that test point to clean that up, which we're proceeding with. And then it won't have to be reported to DEP, and it doesn't become on the mass contingency plan. So, that was in response to some comments we got, I believe, at this board.
Parking on the superintendent's house?
Yeah, this, originally, we had parking on both sides. We've changed that now so that it's the existing single parking spot and three spots on the other side. We've added a low retaining wall along this side in order to lift the property slightly in order to let out that parking area. We're removing three trees which are dead or dying to accommodate, to clean that end of the site up. The landscaping plan has been submitted and reviewed by your consultant, and it sounds like everything has been worked out in this now in an acceptable form, according to your consultant.
We moved the sheds at the superintendent's house.
Yes, we moved these away from the property lines. We relocated these slightly. Septic, which Matt will discuss, we've moved those too. I think that that covers everything. One thing, the bus turnaround, we're still not sure where we are with this. On the sidewalk that we had, Ogilvy said that they would consider having the bus turnaround on their property, which would mean that we don't have to realign Warren Lane. This corner would suffer a great deal if we have to put the bus turnaround here. Two very large pine trees will come down, and we cut back and widen the entrance. I'm not sure where that stands or how that gets determined. If this does in fact work out, it's a superior thing. The way it works is the bus comes in, and the children get off, then the bus goes up and turns around, or the bus goes up, turns around, comes back, and picks up the children. This is the spot where the children get on or off. And there are three buses a day that come to this location.
Yeah, I think that's, we can get into traffic as, as much later.
The historic commission had some suggestions. We put in as an alternate putting covered roofs over the two porches that we built on the back of the house for the rear exits out of 71. They wanted some more detail to the mountains and the fenestration generally, which we've added to the doors in particular, the water department. And we're in the process of selecting exactly how many columns and the spacing of the columns on front porch to 66, 68.
But you decided to put a roof on the porch?
Oh, this always had a roof. It was these up here that didn't. The small porches off back of 71. This was always roof. And that's the major change to 66, 68, is the addition of a wraparound porch to try to give it a more residential feel. This building used to be a farm, and then it was converted to a two-family, and it's, it wasn't, say, handed them the best possible way. But this gives it a more residential feel. We're also redoing the exterior of the building. We're not doing anything in the interior, except we're adding fire suppression on both 66 and 68. And 68, we're doing a little bit of work to realign the kitchen, bathroom renovation. So, I think that's everything that's changed since the last time we were here.
Architecturally?
Architecture.
Engineering and landscaping, is that, is what, who's doing the landscaping presentation? You are?
Engineering.
Engineer, is anybody doing the landscape presentation?
Well, I can, he's not here, he couldn't make it tonight, but I can go through this. We've located all of the exterior lighting. We gave it to you in a package. It's all dark skies, it's all sharp cutoff. Most of it is sconces, with the exception of this one bollard to light this path. This was a request that we get some light on this path. The species have been worked out and are all listed. It's primarily native planting. We've got a chart that indicates the lumens, I think it's, I can't quite read this because it's like, but it's significantly below what would be allowable on this site. Most of what we're trying to do here, I think the neighborhood, it's been clear in the two meetings we've had in the neighborhood and now with the sidewalk, that the neighborhood likes the land the way it is. It's a beautiful site, and so we've kept it down. We've done a screening planting along this line for this house, and we've, we looked at the plantings along this line, and they're all deciduous. So, we've added a lot of evergreen and other plants along this line in order to create screening between this residence and this.
The adjacent buildings, it looks like this house with a, there's an outbuilding behind it, and then is that another outbuilding?
There's another outbuilding here which is connected to this line. But this, this house is the one that we're doing most of the screening for, and this house is especially close.
Good. Engineering?
Yep. I brought in Matt Wanneman with Land Tech Consultants. And the other, the engineering, after meeting with the Stormwater Permanent Authority, there was kind of the focus on, previously, we had touched on kind of treatment of the stormwater runoff and infiltration. And kind of where this is primarily a sandy soil, they had recommended that we focus on treatment and not so much on the recharge of the stormwater. And by eliminating, you know, any realignment of the access to the north and east, that kind of further reduced the impervious surfaces to the north, where we had previously had a rain garden out in front of the former water department building. And ironically, even though it seemed like a nice spot where there was this secluded island, it wasn't capturing as much of the impervious services that he felt that we could, and I agree. So, it was, as Bob said, moved over to the southeast a little bit. And what that effectively does is it almost captures, you know, all of Warren Lane in front of this project from 66 all the way to 74, because there's a high point here, and then there's another small high point here. So, you're capturing a lot of runoff for Warren Ave before it gets discharged into the wetland. We did receive a letter late today with the review of this plan, with some minor tweaks to the drainage, adding a small sediment for bay to this basin and some, a stone apron for this small basin. So, nothing major, there was no shifts or any further movements of the stormwater. I think we're comfortable with the locations, it's just fine tuning them a little bit. I'm reading through his letter. Secondly, the second basin over here captures the runoff. This is currently a gravel drive, so it seemed like an opportunity to capture and treat some of the runoff from this paved surface. And I think as we quickly discussed, this was shifted so that the curb cut mimics the existing curb cut, so there was a realignment of this area to maintain that current curb cut utilities. There currently is a water service that comes through the building, and so that would get upgraded out into Warren Ave. There would be two-inch services brought to each of the buildings for fire protection and domestic. There's a new gas service that was just run down the road. Those connections would be maintained. Sewer system, the septic system. This shows the 100-foot buffer in this, this dark red, the riverfront ironically kind of mimics it very closely, but then it dives off, off in this direction. So, these tanks may have to get slid slightly to stay outside the 200-foot wave where we did submit the plans to the Board Health. She responded in email and just didn't comment on the plan set, we just had some further follow-up comments that she wanted some more information, specifically this area. We're in the process of getting her that information as quickly as possible, hopefully the end of this week, Monday, no later than Monday. The septic system was sized. Our plan set does have all the sizing in the cals in the site plan submitted, and we did sell logs in the Stormwater Report. There was some minor grading that was adjusted from the previous plan set for the breakout for, you know, for your septic system. And then there was a small retaining wall, two to three feet along this property line. I still think you can, there's still about 10 feet or so, 12 feet to afford all the plantings, the buffer plantings that's shown in the landscape plan. But that is a new item, just previously, it was, the natural grade was to be maintained, but there is a small fill situation to accommodate that. And then I think as Bob talked about, there was the discussion to bring in this landscape wall along the existing accessway to provide a kind of a sound barrier from the tire traffic for this house. That has been added to the plan set, and we regraded this area as discussed.
How tall is that for a change?
At its highest, it's getting close to three and a half feet. It's about three feet. There's a 158, and then there's a 160, so there's about two feet tall here. It's a 159, 160, so it's going to be anywhere from two to three feet tall.
Is that being necessary if we were selecting the groups that are in Ogilvy's?
Well, okay. We kind of kept it a good six, eight feet off the road. It varies, you know, a minimum of six feet. It gets wider down here or further from the right away. And the effort, the thought was any realignment, but also snow removal. And that can get shifted. There's nothing prohibiting that if the board wants to.
Just doesn't want to be a structure?
Yeah.
You need to hold it under three feet.
No, absolutely. And we were bringing these grades out to create that wall, so there's, I don't think there's, there's still plenty of room to, I think, shift that back another five, 10 feet without jeopardizing that.
I'm very confused about where the proposed or possible right of way.
Let me try to explain it.
Okay, thanks.
We have, we're in the process of signing a contract with Bobby Show, Traffic Engineer, and he's going to do a study of what
I know about this part.
Okay. Well, the answer to the question will depend on what his conclusions are. But, but the objective, if possible, is to address the two major traffic issues with the existing roadway alignments, if we can do it. The first one is where the bus turns around, and the second one is how to slow down and try to mitigate the impact from Ogilvy's, slow down the trucks.
I actually thought it was more like, rather than have the truck speeding by that house as on their way out, it would change the whole instance entirely. Am I wrong there?
That was the proposal, but that creates several problems.
Oh, it does.
Yeah. For one thing, the turning radii are, get to be problematic. By the time you're finished, you're, you might as well not do it. The other thing is it create a bit tree clearing all the way from that fork.
From that fork, from Gun Club and?
Yes, back 125 feet. So, and the third thing is it changes the easement, which means that now there is a new easement, not a grandfathered one going to Ogilvy's, which is, we just discussed when we talked to Ogilvy's. So, if we can find a way to mitigate the traffic impacts, whatever they turn out to be, in the existing easement, that would be great. I don't know if we can or not. That's going to be up to Bobby Show to tell us whether we can do it or we can't.
Interesting point, though, that if the decision, or if Bob decides that that's probably the best thing to do, would they have to go and get another easement variance or something like that?
Well
If the old one goes away because it's grandfathered, what happens?
That's what we were talking to the Ogilvy's people about, you know? That introduces a level of complexity into the Ogilvy's part of the puzzle.
Right.
So, and it, you know, it creates a kind of a drainage, you know? We've just heard that this simplifies the whole drainage issue, and
And the clearing the trees.
And the clearing of the trees. Yeah, so there are some pieces that hang on to this, and we'll just see what Bob has to say. You know, I don't know what his timetable's going to be, but I think it's, he's been told to go fast.
If you know about the meeting.
And I did get him copies of the three sets of plans that we've done and submitted for the trust and the planning board.
Yeah.
I did email him those plans, and then some other thoughts that have come up just in the process of what we've considered.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing is, CTC has approved funds for the, for the selectmen per request to run the sidewalk from the 20 up to this whole thing, right? Remember, on Monday night?
Sidewalk request.
Right, right. But at what point is that overlaid? Because I was looking at the trees on the road when we were out there the other day, and I'm thinking, boy, it's going to be pretty hard to put that sidewalk in without putting taking up a fair number of trees.
I think, isn't that part of his scope, to take a look at that?
I'm just wondering at what point that happens.
Vincy, is that part of his scope?
To look at sidewalk?
I thought it was in the scope work. So, he's going to look at that too, right?
Yeah. About the proposed sidewalk and the amount of trees removal that will take place if that happens. I mean, I know that Bob said that it was designed for the least possible removal, but those trees are right there.
Yeah, so this is far as traffic and access, that is, Bobby Show's being charged with tying all these projects together.
All the pieces together.
So that we have a piece of vision.
Right.
The first thing is to provide some real data on traffic. It's right there, it's anecdotal.
Exactly. So, he's going to start with counts, traffic counts, and he's going to monitor the speeds so that we can get some real data on that. Yes.
When he's looking at speed, and one of the sort of anecdotal things I did hear from the neighbors, I think this is probably true with any traffic study, that, but in particular in this case, that the trucks that are, the folks who are under contract or, you know, whose employer is in front of the planning board is very, very good about keeping their speed down right now. So, I think we should have, like, you know, traffic studies go on forever so that we keep the speed down. I'm making a joke just to make the point of somehow, I mean, I'm sure, you know, traffic engineers face this all the time, but in this case, it's very, you know, it's such a small area, it's such a small number of people involved.
Yeah. You were saying they're on their best behavior when people are standing there. He's saying, he's saying that they get run into this all the time, just as you said, and they have ways of doing it that don't alert people to the fact that they're, that they're doing it. So, and we asked him how, and he said, that's a secret, but he didn't want to divulge.
Then I won't ask anybody to explain this secret.
They just put their smartphone out there, and it sends the data.
We asked about drones. He said they don't use drones. Anyway, they're going to, he says they're going to get good data, but when we were out there on the sidewalk, I noticed that the truck that was going fastest was the Westin Town Truck.
Yes, correct. He was flying by.
My children and grandchildren live in that house on Warren Lane and Warren Ave for nine years, so I've been there on a, quite a few, and the trucks really do speed.
Yeah, that's what we've heard. Speed bumps are, we understand that speed bumps are out of the question on the driveway because people are worried about the trucks bouncing, making a lot of noise, but there may be other traffic calming measures that we can introduce. You know, one of the things, we'll see. Well, I mean, he's the expert, so we'll see what he has to, what he comes back to us with. We're hoping that it's something miraculous we haven't thought of.
Good. Let's make one other comment, too. The Warren Lane slopes down toward Warren Ave, and those trees in that corner are 100 years old. I mean, the white pines certainly, and there are a lot of plantings which are 75. I mean, they're very, very old, and they soak up a lot of that water. So, if they were taken down to make a bus turnaround, you're going to have it
I think we can work out, I mean, the selectmen in Ogilvy's need to work out an agreement on the bus turnaround. And so, and Ogilvy's is not just, Ogilvy's is not just being asked to provide the bus turnaround, they volunteered to let that happen. So, so I think, I think we can deal with the bus turnaround and get that, you know, the selectmen and Ogilvy's can come together on some sort of a legal agreement, which I can't imagine would be a problem, because when we were at the sidewalk, Ogilvy's actually showed us where the bus could turn around on their land in a place that doesn't, has no effect on any of the other parking or those buildings or anything else. So, they have the place for the bus to turn around, they've offered to let the town do that, and all the town has to do is get an agreement on the table, and I think that piece we've got solved. So, the only other piece left is the speeding trucks, you know, I think. Any questions from the board on the presentation, anything? Consultants, Dave, have you had a chance to look at the revised engineering drawings?
Yeah, yeah, I've looked at them. You know, Richard Swinger's doing the real details, and then I'll look at Richard's. But, I mean, it is what it is. It's amazing what you don't have to build when you're not putting 10,000 square feet on an acre, so, you know, we don't, you know, we're trying to solve the kind of workaday problems that you talked about, we're not going to have to clear half an acre to put in infiltration or anything.
Right. Yeah, and that was one of the things that we found out on the sidewalk, that the infiltration basins don't involve cutting down any of the existing trees. So, we're, you know, and relocating the septic line into the roadway means that you don't have to clear that whole band of trees on the southern side of Warren Ave. So, it's, it's, you know, it's simplified, and on the other hand, I think it's more sensitive. Kim, did you have a chance to look at the landscape?
I did. We've done a couple iterations of it, and, you know, it's some minor tweaks, but they have responded to every, you know, concern I had. It's good.
Good. Just trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, one thing that came up at the sidewalk. Are we going to have a generator for the, for the septic system or no?
But it's going to be wired to accept a portable generator.
Portable.
Which the housing, I guess it's elderly housing who's managing this property will have that portable generator.
Okay.
So that if a problem develops, they'll know.
And what's the timetable on the leach field design, the septic design? Does anybody know?
Yep, and that's, we hope to get that in. We're supposed to have plans for the Housing Authority Trust today, hoping to get that into them, and the submitted to the Board Health by Monday.
When do you guys think you're going to have your application into the ZBIA?
We had a working date of September 25th. So, with the Board of Health plans in by Monday, we might be squeaking in, but I think, you know, a lot of the pieces are there. It's, you know, taking information from reports and, you know, creating narrative reports that the zoning board can read as opposed to trying to pull information from a bunch of different plans.
How do you think that's going to work?
Everything's there, I would say, except, you know, we do need the Board of Health at least, you know, a response from her that she's on the way to approving the plan.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's the kingpin. If that doesn't work, then the whole thing is sort of academic, so that's why I was asking about the timetable on that. Well, I mean, I think, is it going to work like this, that you guys make the application on the 25th, and then the ZBIA asks for comments from boards? Is that the way it's going to work?
That's what I understand. And what we had suggested, and, you know, we'll take your lead on this, but we had suggested to the team, when we submit to the ZBIA, let's, you know, submit by Dropbox to all of the boards who we've met with already, just as a courtesy. Here's what we filed, you will be asked for comment, you know, thank you very much. So that, because you've seen a lot of different versions, so this way you'll get, you'll get what the ZBIA has received from us simultaneously. I mean, the ZBIA then may also send you a copy, and we may be duplicating that for a little bit, but
That's not the way it usually works. It usually works that the ZBIA gets the thing and then distributes, but you're proposing distributing, jumping, just doing it yourselves, and saving the ZBIA the trouble?
I think that probably the ZBIA administrator by regulation is required to do things a particular way, so I think she probably will send as well.
Okay.
But this may give you a little lead time. It may take her, you know, a week to be able to forward it to you, and we thought, you know, once we file with the ZBIA, it would be easy for us to get, I mean, I was thinking of a Dropbox method, if that's helpful to you.
That's fine. Right, and I think we're at the stage now where the planning board can pretty much sign off on, I think we're okay on all the pieces we typically look at. Once we get the request to, who to give our comments to, then we can write a memorandum. I don't think we're going to have many conditions, frankly.
We have to wait.
Well, the critical path piece is the traffic engineer at this point, but it's not, as I understand it, that's not necessarily, it depends on how, on the timing, but the traffic piece is not necessarily going to have to be in place completely by town meeting. That, that can, that can follow along if it has to. That you're only proposing on the affordable housing piece at this point, and that the traffic piece is a matter of getting resolved with the selectmen and Ogilvy's and the planning board, and maybe it happens in time for town meeting And maybe it happens in time for town meeting or maybe it doesn't. I expect what we have is enough information by town meeting by the end of November to be able to stand up a town meeting and say, look, this is how we think it's going to work, kind of thing. That's how I think it's going to happen.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, obviously we'd love for them to, you know, be able to do a traffic study and have results and have responses, but I, we'd rather a thorough, well-thought-out plan as opposed to a rushed one.
Yeah. Right, okay. So other than that one thing, which is not really part of our review of the affordable housing piece, we're good to go, right? Everybody, everybody think we are? Okay, good. It's a lot of progress in a short amount of time. Congratulations.
Would be, would we be removing this as part of the site plan at this point or do we keep this?
I would just keep that for now.
That's a question we haven't.
We don't have an agreement yet.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
PBS, it's going to be on eight times.
Yeah, that's what I'm telling her.
But it's not really our issue.
It's good though. I only caught two of them, I guess, but they're good.